Good evening and welcome to the City of Helena City Commission Meeting, January 23rd, 2023, 6:00 PM. This meeting is called to order. Madam Clerk.
City Attorney Doctor?
Here.
Interim City Manager Burton?
Here.
Commissioner Dean?
Here.
Commissioner Logan?
Here.
Commissioner Shertliff?
Here.
And for the record, Commissioner Reed will be a few minutes late. Mr. Mayor?
Okay.
Mayor Collins?
Here.
Would you rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Welcome and thank you for participating in the City of Helena City Commission Meeting. We are pleased to be able to provide this alternative meeting format in the city's effort to broaden public participation. Please be patient as we may experience technical difficulties during the meeting. We welcome your public commentary. Please read the following tips and guidelines for the app usage and your participation. The minutes for 8:22, 22, 11:30, 22, 12:14, 22, 12:19, 22, and 1:04, 23 were received. Do we have any comments or questions?
No, sir.
And they will be accepted as submitted. Presentation. We have Chief Petty?
No, you're both up here. Yeah, it's okay. Yep. They won't bite. Not yet. Good evening, Mayor and Commission.
Good evening.
Tonight I have two officers that have successfully completed their one-year probationary period with the Helena Police Department. At the end of the probationary period and under Montana state law, the appointment of the officer must be submitted to the City Commission. And if the appointment is confirmed by the City Commission, then the officer becomes a member of our police force. With this said, I'm seeking a vote from the Commission to affirm these two officers tonight. Prior to having the Commission vote on the officer's confirmation, and if I may, I would like to introduce these two officers and give a brief bio of who they are and where they came from.
Please, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Officer John White, on our right there, is originally from Long Island, New York. Prior to moving to Helena, John worked as an EMT for the Deer Park Fire Department. He and his fiancee Larissa had vacationed in Montana prior to working for HPD to visit family. And after this visit to Montana, he decided he wanted to move out to Montana. Officer White applied with the police department and was ultimately hired in January of 2021. Officer White looks forward to living here in Montana and seeing where his career takes him with the Helena Police Department. Our next officer, Officer Nick Ransom, he was born in California. The stay in California was short-lived as his family moved to the Portland area when he was three months old. He spent his life in the Portland area until he met his wife, Casey, who is a City of Helena employee, Helena native. She convinced him to follow her home to Montana. Officer Ransom and his wife moved to Helena in the spring of 2016. He had been pursuing a career in law enforcement since 2014 and is thrilled to have the opportunity to serve the community he now calls home. Officer Ransom and his wife welcomed their first child in October 2020 and are thrilled to have the opportunity to raise her in our Helena community. I'd like to welcome both Officer White and Officer Ransom to HPD family and the City of Helena. And Mayor, if you don't mind with my introductions of the officers, if they could have a brief moment to address the Commission and introduce any guests they may have?
You bet.
Thank you. Go ahead, Nick.
Thank you, Commission. Thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to be here. Thank you, Chief, for allowing me the opportunity to have this career. And most of all, thank you to my wife and daughter for putting up with the time constraints and all the training that led to this job. I'm thrilled to be able to serve this community I call home, like my bio said, and I hope I have a long career doing just that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commission. Appreciate the opportunity to be an officer here with Helena Police Department. So I want to say a special thank you to the men and women at the police department and a special thank you to Chief Petty here. Thank you to my family, who is not here, but they've been alongside me the whole time, the whole journey. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And with that, Mayor and Commission, I'd like to move to approve the confirmation of these two officers tonight if you see fit.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Mayor, oh, sorry, I'm jumping the gun.
Gee, dude. Okay, I'll entertain a motion from the Commission.
Mr. Mayor, my apologies.
Go ahead.
I move to approve the confirmation of Officer White and Officer Ransom.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Um, should I make a, okay. I'll just give a couple of comments. First, congratulations. Thank you for choosing Helena as your home. Also glad that your wife convinced you to move here. We appreciate that. I'm grateful for your service to the community and helping us keep our community members safe and excited to see you progress throughout the department and being led by the fearless leader now, so really excited to have you. Thanks so much.
Thank you. I think, you can bring your baby in. Bring your little daughter. I think she wants to see this.
Come on up.
This is her day to shine too, you know? Yes. There you go.
Ooh, look at that. Cute.
There you go. She wanted to be part of this. Well, I also want to echo what Commissioner Dean said. Thanks for being a part of our community and family. We appreciate all the hard work. We know it's not easy. It's tough on the family, but we appreciate you being here in Helena. Thank you, too.
Mr. Mayor? Thank you, Officers White and Ransom. Appreciate you stepping into the role that you have. It's a critical, critical one in our community and very much appreciate your willingness to be here. It's a tricky time to find qualified law enforcement officers, so we're really glad you're here. And congratulations, if I didn't say it, on your confirmation. I would like to just mention and thank Chief Petty and Corporal Lewis. I got to spend about half of my day today on a ride-along and it was just a great reminder of really the role that HPD has and the, really the variety of calls that you all respond to and had a great tour of the facilities you work out of. And it was a busy half-shift for me. And just a reminder that, you know, I'll be looking forward to, my understanding is staffing study workload is near completion or at least preliminarily, and be looking forward to that. And hopefully that'll be a springboard that we can use to get you all some help. So, but really appreciate the day, really appreciate the fact that this is your confirmation and that you're here. So, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor? Thank you. Congratulations. Welcome aboard. We're glad that you're here. Like, like we've all said, welcome to Helena. Glad you're a part of our team. I had the opportunity to go through the Citizens Police Academy in the first year underneath Chief Petty. Thoroughly enjoyed it, enjoyed getting to meet some of the officers on the department and then took the MPAT test and I've taken it twice. And so I've got a, I've got an appreciation for what you all have to do. But again, congratulations. Welcome to Montana. Welcome to Helena and we're glad you're part of the family.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, one more comment. Just encourage my colleagues, if you haven't done a ride-along in a while, I'm sure that would be easily arranged, so worth your time.
Very easily arranged.
Yeah, lots, lots to see and learn. So, thank you.
I know I got, I got put on the roadside because he had an emergency, so, you know, he's, "Oh, Mayor, you gotta get down," you know. Anyway, welcome. It's been moved and seconded and Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye, and let me just quickly say welcome and congratulations. I'm having all manner of connectivity problems. I was unable to say that previously, but welcome.
Commissioner Shertliff?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Okay. I'm recommending the following board appointments. Railroad TIF Advisory Board, appointment of Abigail Rousch to a first term on the Railroad TIF Advisory Board as a Helena College University of Montana representative. This is an unexpired term. Affordable Housing Trust Fund Advisory Board, reappointment of Stephanie Bull to a second term on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Advisory Board as a banking finance representative. Term will expire January 31st, 2026. Reappointment of Chris Hunter to a second term on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Advisory Board as a citizen-at-large representative. Term will expire January 31st, 2026. Information Technology and Services Board, appointment of Gary Myers to a first term on the Information Technology and System Board as an IT executive-at-large, citizen-at-large. Term will expire January 23rd, 2025. Any comments or discussion from the Commission? Do we have any public comments? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I would move to accept the following board appointments. To the Railroad TIF Advisory Board, the appointment of Abigail Rousch to a first term on the Railroad TIF Advisory Board as a Helena College University of Montana representative. This is an unexpired term. Reappointment of Stephanie Bull to a second term on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Advisory Board as a banking finance representative. Term will expire January 31st, 2026. Reappointment of Chris Hunter to a second term on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Advisory Board as a citizen-at-large representative. Term will expire January 31st, 2026. Appointment of Gary Myers to a first term on the Information Technology and Systems Board as an IT executive citizen-at-large.
Second.
The term will, sorry, the term will expire January 23rd, 2025.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion?
Mr. Mayor, just, I want to make one brief comment because we haven't had a chance to mention this at any of our regular Commission meetings, but the appointment of Gary Myers, I just want to recognize he is replacing Scott Boswell, who served on that board for about 30 years and served, he was the citizen and basically the community expert. He worked for the state IT department and provided a lot of really excellent expertise on that board and we were all very sad to see him go, but he is on to his retirement and new adventures, so I just wanted to briefly recognize his decades of service on that board.
Is he here today?
He's not here today, but I will send him an email so that he knows that he did get recognized because he deserves it.
You bet. Any other comments from the Commission? It's been moved and seconded, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Commission proposals from the Commissioners? Any comments? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you. So, just wanted to give the public and my colleagues an update on the city manager recruitment process. As you know, we have been working with Communication and Management Services here in Helena. The Subcommittee, the City Manager Relations Subcommittee has been, consisting of myself and Mayor Collins, have been working with them and we met with CMS on Thursday and discussed the process so far. It closed today, I believe, at 5:00. And so we're in the process of winnowing a number of applications. We've got a good, good pool, winnowing that down to a sizable, manageable pool. And we will begin on the last week of January, first week of February of preliminary interviews. So, that, anything I'm forgetting?
No.
So, basically just wanted to let the public know that the process is marching on. So, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Any other comments from the Commission? Okay, moving along. City Attorney, update?
Mayor, Members of the Commission, I have nothing to update tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Report of the interim City Manager?
Mayor, Commissioners, I have nothing to report this evening.
Communications from Helena Citizens Council, HCC Representative Steve Allen, you have the floor.
Steve Allen, A-L-L-E-N, 2120 East Broadway Street. And just wanted basically to say that the Helena Citizens Council has spent a majority of the last two months updating our bylaws so that they are more in align with the city charter. We, as we went through them, started to find that some of the things the charter said and some of the things that the bylaws said were in direct violation with each other, so we changed it so that we would be more in alignment. And in addition to that, over the last couple of months, we've been electing or selecting, and then we will be electing this coming Wednesday, new, new officers for the Citizens Council. And we're very fortunate right now to have a full 28-member council. And that is, it's been a while since we've had absolutely full board and it's really, really good. All of the members are really active and involved and it's great. This coming Wednesday, we're going to, like I said, we're going to elect the officers and also the city clerk is going to be with us for an update on the city council and our role in the advisory boards and what we can and can't do and what we should be doing instead of what we have in the past. And we are very much also looking forward to our hearing from her and our role in the hiring of the new city manager.
Thank you. Comments or questions for Mr. Allen?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I did neglect to remind everyone that we are going to be at HCC and you pointed that out. Thank you for the reminder. We'll be there with a representative from CMS to update the Helena Citizens Council on where we're at in the process and steps moving forward, so.
We are very much looking forward to be involved in that process.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other comments from the Commission? Okay, thank you. Regular items. Previously tabled, consider the final plat for the Shopko Minor Subdivision creating four new lots from 10.86 acres on property legally described as Lot 1A, 1A of the amended plat of the Shopko Minor Subdivision in the City of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana, filed under document number 3171732. Community Development Director Brink, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor, Commission. This is in fact a tabled item from your December of the 21st meeting as requested by the applicant at the time. It is back on the agenda as a four-lot minor subdivision. However, we have an amended application only asking for two lots at this time. For reference, the two lots will be the parent tract of course and the lot that is Chase Bank. No other parcels are asked for at this time. In the future, they may ask for additional, but right now it's just a two-lot minor. So again, tonight for consideration is Shopko Minor Subdivision creating two new lots from the 10.86 acres on property legally described as Lot 1A, 1A of the amended plat of the Shopko Minor Subdivision in the City of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana, filed under doc number 3171732. Just briefly, I've got a presentation, but I don't want to mess up my colleague's presentation. Just briefly, this preliminary plat that this minor subdivision was part of was approved by the Commission on the 25th of April of this year. This final plat does meet all the minimum city standards and is in conformance with that approved preliminary plat. There were two conditions that were attached to that plat application or that plat approval. The first one was that any new infrastructure or stormwater elements need to be installed and approved by Public Works prior to final plat. That has taken place. And any new fire hydrant must be installed northeast of Lot 1A, 1A2 prior to final plat approval. Again, that's a hydrant located just immediately adjacent to the Chase Bank lot. Again, these conditions have all been met and final acceptance was received from Public Works on November, November the 2nd of last year. Preliminary plat or the plat review committee of the county examining surveyor have looked at the plat and have made some suggestions for revisions and the surveyor has made those revisions and we have those and you have that in front of you. Again, staff recommendation is to move to approve that final plat and recommended motion would be to move to approve the final plat for the Shopko Minor Subdivision creating two new lots from the 10.86 acres on property legally described as Lot 1A, 1A of the amended plat of the Shopko Minor Subdivision in the City of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana, filed under document 3171732.
Thank you, Director Brink. Comments or questions from the Commission?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Question for Mr. Brink. Is the Shopko building that's there now, will that stay or will that be going?
Currently, we haven't heard of any plans for that to go. I'm not sure if the applicant's representative is willing to speak to that. We've heard options one way or the other, but nothing in concrete. But I would imagine with the four-lot preliminary, they may move in the future to proceed on and have the full preliminary plat approved, but what's going to happen to the building itself, I'm not entirely sure.
Thank you. Any others?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I have one, actually I have two questions. One of them, I think I, it's a clarification. On our, and this is more for the public, the public's information than not, in the, in the edited memo we have, it does have the two new lots, but on the actual agenda title sheet, it still says four new lots. So for folks listening online, it's correct that it is two new lots, not four new lots as the, it's different in two different places on here.
That's correct. It remained four lots on your agenda because that's the way it was tabled.
Great. And then my other question was, we'd received some emails previously about some of the parking arrangements and concerns. Does that have any impact on the, any motions we take tonight?
So that was a concern of the four-lot. You had consenting owners or parties to an agreement and their legal representation that provided some notice and some comments to you in opposition to the minor, the four-lot minor. They've rescinded that, knowing that it's only going to be two lots, but they're going to reserve the right to protest in the future if additional parcels come forward. But right now, they've rescinded any opposition to just the two-lot minor.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other, do we have any public comments?
Good evening, Mayor Collins, Commissioners. My name is Greg Worth, W-I-R-T-H, with Staley Engineering, 3530 Centennial Drive. Again, I'd like to thank Mr. Brink for putting a review on the application and preparing the staff report. This item was tabled, was scheduled, preliminary scheduled for December of last year. It was tabled. The owner of the property, we're working with the consenting owners. On the property, there are covenants, conditions, and restrictions, and they were working on their private agreements, which were handling, trying to be concurrent and tandem with the city processes. And they were, one of the consenting owners, you know, contested the one location of the lot. So that's why we pulled back to create the, create a one-new lot. It's a two-lot, so one-new lot and that's, this is to create the Chase Bank lot so they can convey the property. So, the parcel development will allow the financial means and activity to support the redevelopment of the Shopko site. Everybody knows the Shopko has been vacant for several years. This project specifically addresses the Shopko site, you know, directly referenced in the growth policy to support infill and revitalization efforts, creating growth while minimizing the community's physical footprint. There's no zone change proposed. This is all the property's currently zoned B2. This type of development can occur without a subdivision process. In fact, you know, the Chase, Chase happened with a ground lease, but the intent was to create a fee simple parcel just for title, land title needs. So, the creation of lots responds to market demands and to meet the land security needs. Specifically to the other, two lots, one is for Chase Bank, one is for Shopko, the Greater Shopko Project. To Commissioner Shertliff's question, what's going to happen to the building at this point? We don't know. I'm not privy to that information. The information that I've been received is they are trying to suit a tenant for the existing building to revitalize, reuse the existing building. But this is a, obviously this subdivision is a component of that, you know, creating investor needs to create the financial mechanism to make the building more attractive to an investor. So, the preliminary plat was approved on April 25th of 22, 2022 with all conditions being satisfied. Re-reviewed the staff report and concur with the analysis and recommendations for final plat approval. As noted, this is a correction to motion to approve two new lots with the final plat. I'm available to answer any questions and from the current lot owner, current property owner, City Vest, Mr. Michael Mossman is also available via Zoom if there are any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the public? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the final plat for the Shopko Minor Subdivision creating two new lots from the 10.86 acres on property legally described as Lot A1, A1 of the amended plat of the Shopko Minor Subdivision in the City of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana, filed under document number 3171732.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Public hearings. Consider a resolution establishing fees to be changed for the Bill Roberts Municipal Golf Courses for this 2023 season. Director Smith, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Commissioners. I'm here today to present this resolution at this public hearing to establish the golf fees for the 2023 golf season for the Bill Roberts Golf Course. On January 9th, the Commission passed a resolution of intent for these fees. And this is the resolution to adopt the proposed fees effective January 23rd, 2023. I'm here to field any questions.
Comments or questions from the Commission?
Mr. Mayor, just one question. Director, thanks for being here. We got an email earlier today from a member of the Golf Advisory Board that was concerned about, I think he was the only member to vote, to not increase these fees on the Golf Advisory Board, but one of the comments was, was basically, you know, we shouldn't be increasing these fees and for us that we might be out of line with where other municipal golf courses are in terms of fees. From what I recall, we actually are still falling below, I'd say, the average municipal fees for the fees for the other, compared to the other big seven, eight communities in Montana. Can you talk a little bit about where we compare to some of the other communities in terms of our fee structure?
Absolutely. There are multiple factors in the rates of a golf course, and it varies within a particular city because it comes down to the conditions of the golf course. So it's really difficult to compare one course in another community to ours based on, they're both 18 holes, you have rates for the actual golfing, you have rates for carts. And we did a deep market study of the courses that our golf pro and our golf staff believe were or are the ones to compare to, based on the amenities, the quality of the manicurisms of the course and other factors. And we are in line, if not a little bit below, with what we offer based on our market study.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments from the commission? Yes, go ahead, Manager Burton.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a question for Director Smith.
Please, go ahead.
Director Smith, it's my understanding that the Golf Advisory Board recommended approval of these increases. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Are there any public comments? Madam Clerk. Oh, well, I entertain a motion. Have we gone through that? No. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I would move to approve a resolution establishing fees to be charged for the Bill Roberts Municipal Golf Course for the 2023 season.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Okay, thank you. Consider first passage of an ordinance amending City of Helena Ordinance Number 3097 and official zoning map of the City of Helena changes the zoning district from CLM Commercial Light Manufacturing to B2 General Commercial for property legally described as Track 2, situated in Section 20, Township 10 North Range 3 West PMM, City of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana, as shown and described on COS 3198943. Manager Burton or Planner Alvarez or Director Brink, one of you got the floor. Okay, Planner.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. I am Michael Alvarez, and I am a planner with the Community Development Department, and I'll be presenting this North Sanders apartment zone change. There we go. And this is, as the mayor just read, consideration of first passage of an ordinance amending City of Helena Ordinance Number 3097 and the official zoning map for the City of Helena that changes the zoning district from CLM Commercial Light Manufacturing to B2 General Commercial for property legally described as Track 2, situated in Section 20, Township 10 North Range 3 West PMM, City of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana, as shown and described on Certificate of Survey 3198943. So this property, this map might look pretty familiar to the mayor and commission. This is the parcel directly north of the track that had a zone change before you at the end of last year. So this is generally located on the east side of North Sanders Street, across from Marshall Lane and south of the Winco there. The applicant is seeking a zone change to the B2 General Commercial Zoning District, and the applicant is hoping to build residential multifamily by right. If they didn't have, if they don't get the zone change, I would be before you requesting a conditional use permit to build it in the commercial, Commercial Light Manufacturing District, pardon me. So the Commercial Light Manufacturing District provides for the community's commercial and light manufacturing needs. These uses generally need access to the city's transportation amenities and should be located to reduce adverse impacts upon residential neighborhoods in the city. The B2 General Commercial District provides for compatible residential uses and a broad range of commercial and service uses that serve large areas of the city and that are normally required to sustain a community. In the adoption of zoning regulations, we, and a full written review is in our staff report, but we will review it by Montana MCA Section 762304 2A through 2E. And those findings, A, the adequate provision of light and air secured in all zones using setbacks and restrictions on building heights; B, the City of Helena's expected trip generation numbers for CLM are less than for B2, and the applicants have submitted a TIS; C, that the current zoning would be, would require a CUP for the intended use, which is multi-dwelling residences, and we are generally trying to have people build by right, which B2 would allow for; D, this area of the neighborhood is located on an arterial and is dominated by car-oriented commercial development in B2 zoning. Our growth policy considers high density residential to be compatible with commercial areas; E, this site is currently vacant and hasn't been developed under its previous zoning. So one item of note, the Transportation Systems Department did not agree with some of the findings about the level of impact the proposed development would have on the level of service of nearby intersections. Transportation Systems and the applicant will be coordinating on that item at the time of building permit. So the 2019 Helena Growth Policy Land Use Chapter and Future Land Use Map identifies the neighborhood of the proposed rezone area as commercial. Surrounding properties are similarly designated as commercial, save for the City of Helena Parkland designated as open space. That open space over there does not have park amenities, however. The growth policy also includes several goals and objectives that are applicable to the proposed zone change. Objective 12, which is to promote and maintain development of diverse housing stock, and objective 78, which is to encourage infill development on vacant and underutilized land within the city. The proposed zoning B2 is, would most squarely address the land use maps designation for the area of commercial. This is our general commercial zone type. The proposed use would most squarely address the growth policy's direction to promote infill development. This was legally noticed in the Helena IR. Neighbor notices were mailed to adjacent property owners and a sign was placed on the proper premise. One public comment was collected for this proposal and sent as, sorry, is included in your packet, Mayor and Commission. The zoning commission on December 15th met and they recommended approval of this ordinance.
Thank you. Comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
So in the staff memo, it indicates a disadvantage, and I'll just read it, and I'm not sure who would like to field the question, but the intersection at North Sanders and Cedar Street is currently failing. And this project, along with the housing project adjacent and to the south, will exacerbate that condition. Could maybe someone expand on that a little in terms of what it means to be failing?
Mayor and Commissioner, yeah, I would be happy to. Essentially, the volume of traffic that's currently being produced at North Sanders Street makes those turns, especially from the eastbound traffic on Cedar Street, making that left turn in, onto North Sanders Street. And eastbound traffic, or traffic that will be turning eastbound headed, from North Sanders Street headed south, making that left-hand turn, pretty treacherous. And adding more residential and simply more facilities on that road is going to exacerbate that condition. Currently, since we don't impose conditions on zone changes, we're really looking at this as something to handle at building permit. We don't control Cedar Street, MDT does. So the city is taking point on coordinating with them about how to handle that situation.
A follow-up, if I may.
Please.
So when, when you say the intersection is currently failing, it's in terms of traffic flow and volume and all that?
Mayor and Commissioner, yes.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, similar along the same line of questions, and I do see that Director Knopki and Chris Kueh are online, so I'm wondering if maybe one of them could chime in on this part. So in the agenda packet, it does note that what led to that disadvantage in the memo packet was not that the Transportation Systems Department disagreed with the data that the traffic impact study found, but the conclusions of it. And then, as Commissioner Logan noted, that transportation would work with MDT and the developer. And I'm wondering if maybe Director Knopki can talk about what next steps look like, because I know we've run into issues in the past where it's kind of a chicken or egg conversation. Do you work with the developer first, or do you work with MDT first? Because you can't guarantee either will go along with the other's proposed solution. So I'm wondering if Director Knopki might, or Chris, might be able to talk about what the thought process will be here moving forward.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This is Director Knopki.
Director Knopki, you're breaking up. I don't know, you have poor connection.
Can you hear me now, Mayor?
Yes, we can.
Sorry about that. So as many of you know, there's a signal at Cedar and Harris Street, right by the post office on what used to be Kmart, which is now the U-Haul. We're working with MDT to try to add an additional signal at Sanders or potentially move the signal from Harris to Sanders, as the majority of the traffic that's in that area is being accessed by Sanders and not Harris.
Thank you. Any other comments? Are there any public comments?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Greg Worth again with Staley Engineering. Again, I'd like to thank Mr. Alvarez for helping review the application and preparing the staff report. So this request is to change the zoning on the property on Sanders Street immediately south of Winco Foods from CLM to B2 zoning. The project was discussed with city staff at a pre-application meeting on September 26th, 2022, because as Mr. Alvarez, there's a couple of different routes this could have been, the proposed project could occur. The proposed project is a four-story, 132-unit apartment building. We certainly recognize the zone change is not specific to use, but that is the impetus of why we're pursuing a zone change. It was determined a zone change to B2 is the most appropriate due to the same zoning immediately north of this project on Winco. And the property with the four-story building is not suitable for the R4 zoning because there's a building height restriction of 42 feet, and a four-story building is going to be higher than 42 feet. So we've reviewed the staff report and concur with the analysis. The zone change is aligned with the growth policy. It's compatible with the adjacent B2 zoning to the north and the recently changed R4 zoning to the south. The project provides, promotes infill development to fully utilize city services, and the infrastructure is, has available capacity. Regarding the intersection at Cedar Street, the portion that is, when it says failing, you know, the failing is the southbound traffic trying to make left turns going eastbound on Cedar Street. That, that project is already identified, or that movement is already identified having difficulties in the long-range transportation plan. So this project is, you know, is contributing to a, you know, a conflict that already occurs. Yet, you know, the availability of the signal at Harris Street alleviates that issue, and the traffic routing actually shows that motorists are learning, you know, to, to use that signal because of, you know, essentially, a five-lane road impedes cross-traffic, you know? That's one of the flaws in building a multi-lane facility through a city, is that you can move traffic from A to B, but you cannot move traffic from X to Y, you know? So, you know, the, really, the crux of the problem is the five-lane road does not promote what we want in the city. You know, we need the city housing, but the five-lane road actually creates a disadvantage. So there's other ways to do that, help provide the infrastructure to support what we want in the community, but that's a long-range transportation plan, update issue, not a site-specific issue, so. We'll note that the public comment that was received is from Winco Foods, so they provided correspondence on December 10th that they were strongly in favor of the planned project. The zoning commission heard the project on 12/15, December 15th, 2022, and they unanimously recommended approval. With that, we request approval of the zone change from CLM to B2. I'm available to answer any questions. Mr. Andy Brummer with Trident Development is also in attendance via Zoom and is available to answer questions. I'll note that Trident Development has over 20 years of experience constructing similar apartment projects like this, including the recent Silver Creek Apartments in Bozeman. They intend to be a long-term owner of the asset, and the project will increase the tax base in Helena by hundreds of thousands of dollars while providing much-needed housing within the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments? I'll entertain them.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize. There is one hand raised online. Your name is listed only as Tyler. If you could please state your full name for the record.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner and members of the commission. Also, thank you, Mr. Alvarez, for that detailed report, and of course, Greg, for all your hard work on this. I am the broker helping Trident Development purchase the land. In addition to--
Excuse me, sir. Would you introduce yourself, please?
Oh, my name is Tyler Warren, W-A-R-N-E. I'm at 800 North Last Chance Gulch with Coldwell Banker Commercial, Green and Green. And I just wanted to make a couple of quick comments. First of all, I don't believe that the current users or the applicants, it is the applicant's responsibility for the change of the city, I guess, infrastructure and use, as Kmart used to be a pretty popular location and now is not driving as much traffic as it once did. The growth of the city in a different direction shouldn't be solely the responsibility of the applicant. And the fact that the increase in tax base would help pay for some of these improvements to the city infrastructure for traffic, like changing where a light is located. More housing from an appraiser's standpoint, more housing, more supply, will also drive housing prices down, and that is, has been a major problem in Helena for a long time. And then, of course, the tax base will increase. So those are my public comments, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, I have no other hands raised online.
I'll entertain a motion.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Mayor. I was gonna, just briefly, a comment. We are opening, reopening the long-range transportation plan this next year, so this along with a number of other updates will be obviously included, but just want to note that that, that plan is getting updated this next year, or starting the update.
Thank you, Commissioner. Now, Commissioner Shertliff.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to move approval of the first passage of an ordinance amending City of Helena Ordinance Number 3097 and the official zoning map for the City of Helena that changes the zoning district from CLM--
zoning district from CLM Commercial Light Manufacturing to B2 General Commercial for the property legally described as Track 2, situated in Section 20 Township 10 North Range 3 West PMM City of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana, as shown and described on COS 3198943.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shirtliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public wishes to address the commission? Madam Clerk, do we have anyone online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no hands raised, nor do I have any written public comments.
Any finer discussion from the commission? It's me, Ms. adjourned.